Our apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Percy.
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Here.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Here.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Here.
Here.
Alderman Studer. Six present, two absent. You are the form.
Thank you. The current regular meeting of the city council on October 4th, 2016 is now in session. Council, you have approval of the minutes from September.
Mr. Mayor, review the minutes and follow where I'd like to make a motion there. Except the minutes and place on file.
Motion by Alderman Studer, may I have a second? Second, Alderman Evans, any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Studer. Alderman Evans. Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Six yes, two absent. Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, other matters report tonight, we've got a few special people here. More special than the state's attorney, Jim Glasgow, and Deputy State Attorney Kenneth Gray. You guys can come up. They're here to make the K-9 presentation. And we're deeply honored that you're here tonight.
Thank you, sir. What you understand.
Right here, it's fine. It's super good.
Okay, you're the one that called our office, right? Are you the one that called?
I think it was...
Debra.
Debra.
Debra Beckter.
Debra.
You know, Don Goldin and Reagan Freitag have been very fastidious in paying attention to the problems that have been happening in Shanahan and Wilmington with the heroin epidemic. And I don't know if anybody saw the recent article in the paper. Pat O'Neil announced that we're at 53 fatal overdoses now. That's the highest we've ever had. We hit that in 2012, and 2013, 14, we saw it go down into the 30s. Last year, we came back up to 53. We're on a pace of 72 this year. 72 fatal overdoses on heroin in this county. That's crazy. And back just 15 years ago, we'd have one or two. So it just shows you the dramatic increase that's literally an epidemic. And it's not going to stop. So I know you were having a fundraiser, and I was just talking to Chief Arlen about that. He said to me, I said, you know, "I'm willing to provide the dog and I'll get you the enclosure for the vehicle." He says, "But we don't have the vehicle." So I said, "Whoa." So the fundraiser money can go towards a new vehicle, and I'll pick up all the expenses for the dog and the insert for the car, just like I did for Shanahan. And this is really important to your local community. And Chief, who knows? That dog may allow you to make a bust where you'll see the car, just what you need. Okay? Hopefully, we can get creative in that department. Before I forget, Jeff, we've got one of our therapy dogs. Show everybody. Kiwi works at the Children's Advocacy Center. And she's been trained to sit on the witness stand with a child. If it's necessary, we can make a motion and ask the judge to have the dog sit at the child's feet if the child's under unusual stress or, you know, anguish. And the dog can't be seen by the jury, there'll be a screen, but the dog will be at the child's feet, the dog can make physical contact. And it's amazing. We had a young girl come into the Child Advocacy Center, and she just didn't want to tell what had happened to her, but she played with one of our dogs. She went home, and a week later, she said, "You know, Mom, I want to go back and play with Kiwi, and I want to tell what happened." So we actually got a young child to come out of their shell and tell us the story. We needed to charge the predator because of the therapy from the dog. It's fantastic. And even the parents are sued by it. And Jeff is one of my assistant state attorneys, and he is, Jeff Brown, he has stepped up, and he takes Kiwi how many times a week, Jeff?
One to two times a week. One to two days a week.
Okay. And Sherry Johnson is my administrative assistant, has Kiwi at her house. She's got three of our dogs there. Our first dog, Jackson, was being trained to be a leader dog for the blind, but he had a penchant for squirrels, which would have been, you know, dead end for the person to be led. So he got switched to a therapy dog. Four years ago, he was the first dog in our Child Advocacy Center. Now, we've got Kiwi, and Angus is our other dog, and he can do double duty. He's in the Veterans Court, the Mental Health Court, the Drug Court. So we're creating a very large kennel here at Will County. But it's really good, because when I go home tonight, my dogs will be at the back door to greet me, nobody else. So we all know the unconditional love that these animals bring, and that helps so much with these children that are in such a traumatized state. But getting back on point, I'll add the segue.
Sit down again?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
But, you know, when, you know, I constantly am in contact with the county board members on issues, and, you know, Don and Reagan were very sensitive to what's going on here. And, you know, when I got the call also, that was great to hear that the local community is invested in this, because it's easy to just, you know, say, "What can you do for me?" But you guys are getting in the trenches and going to do something for yourselves. So that's really to be, to be commended. I'm hoping we're going to, it seemed like we were making progress, like I said, we're driving the number down. We can never stop the availability of the darn heroin, no matter how much we do here, because they can drive up to Chicago in 30 minutes, 40 minutes, and have whatever they want. And it's sickening and it's sad. We met with the authorities from Chicago and talked about using some of our agents, you know, to assist up there, to try to knock down some of the supply. Did anybody ever see Men in Black? Remember when Jeeves, the storekeeper, shot his head off and it grew right back? That's what it's like. And you take the drug dealer off the corner in Chicago, there's one there the next minute. There's 150,000 gang members in Chicago, maybe more. So there's always somebody there to take their place. We're very lucky in Will County. We're, you know, spread out, low-rise community, so our drug agents have informants everywhere. And if somebody's dealing heroin, within a few weeks, we have an over here and we're making controlled buys, looking to send them to prison. But because of the profit, because of the demand right now, we're not keeping up. So I'm going to designate one of my attorneys in the office to have the sole responsibility of fighting this heroin epidemic, along, obviously, with law enforcement. But he'll be there to work directly with law enforcement on a daily basis, to come up with different schemes and rays that we can do to stop this. And then we've got to hit the road again with the prevention, and start talking to the kids and the parents, and explain to them what this is, how dangerous it is. And we need help from, you know, people in the community. They go home to talk to their kids, to talk to their neighbors, because children get sucked into this, and they don't even really realize what it is. If a child is drinking alcohol, say, and somebody shows up at a party with some white powder, and then some people start snorting it, 65% of the human population is genetically predetermined to be addicted to heroin after one use. That's how scary this stuff is. You lose control of your rational thought processes, you're no longer in control, and you could be the greatest person in the world, and you turn into a drug zombie. And because this stuff is so potent, it's over 50% pure, as opposed to the 7% pure when we used to see the New York junkies in the peniments, you know, 20 or 30 years ago. This is a whole different animal. And then, of course, you mix in this fentanyl that every once in a while some idiot laces the drug with, and then it's just instantly deadly. It just doesn't make any sense why a drug dealer would want to kill his customers, but they don't care. They're only in it for the instant, you know, cash that they give at the time. And then they know there will be more. So we've got to start fighting at the grassroots level. Larry Walsh fulfilled his commitment when he founded the agency through the Health Department and the Helps Organization. And we have a hero organization, which is a private entity. And with those two agencies and the various elected officials, we're going out on the road a few years ago and making a real impact. We're going to have to do it again. So look for us at Wilmington High School, and I promise you, we'll be there this year. And we've got to really make sure that every adult understands, this isn't, you know, "Maybe I should get involved," it's "I absolutely have to get involved." Any one of us in this room can lose a loved one from this stuff. Because, like I said, once the kid gets involved with it, he's not your kid anymore, he's not the young person you know. And it's not, and I hate to say it's not his fault, but it really isn't, because the physiological change that takes place is like something out of a horror movie. And we've got to make sure the kids understand that. And there used to be a program called Defy it Drug for Youth in Touch at Joliet West. Maybe we need to get something like that. That's where the kids get rewards for staying away from the drug parties and the drinking parties. And they get a credit card where it gives them a discount at the various, you know, fast food places. And they also create a positive reinforcement amongst themselves. You know how hard it is for your kid when everybody else is going to the drinking party on Saturday, and he's the only one not going? Well, if he's got some buddies in the Defy Club that want to go do something else, that's the strength that they need. That's the, you know, the anchor that can help them stay away. So, you know, that's something else I want to try and throw out to the different schools and see if maybe something like that can get started. Because I'm 65 years old, I tell the 16-year-old something, "Oh yeah, right, he's no fuddy duddy." So we need the kids to be telling each other, "You can't do this. It's wrong, it'll kill you, you've got your whole life in front of you." And that will make a much bigger difference. But getting this drug dog down here will be huge. And we're not looking to put users in prison. That's why we have the Drug Court. In fact, I've lost count of the number of kids who have said to me after the Drug Court, "You know, I was so addicted to heroin that if it wasn't for this court, I'd be dead." And they're right. And we've had three kids die in the Drug Court process, after they dried out, after they went through, you know, inpatient, and they got a furlough, and they lapsed. And the one last killed them. That's how dangerous it is. So we've just got to get more aggressive and more committed. And it was wonderful to hear from your community that you're disinvested in it, and thank you so much for the private organization you've got. But redouble your efforts, and let's see if you can raise a significant amount of money for that vehicle. If you need help with publicity, my office can help you. I wish we had some superstar that would come out and everybody would pay money to see him or something, but... Who?
Drew Brees.
Drew Brees? He's not a star. Well, anyway, I like Drew Brees. Drew Brees said, "When they play the National Anthem, sacred flag," and he honored it. So he stood up, so... Yes, and I noticed everybody in this room stood up. It was at the pledge of allegiance. So, anyway, thank you for having us tonight, and if I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to. But I look forward to making this happen. I'll get with the chief, and he can figure out where he wants to buy this dog, because there's a place in Pennsylvania, a place in Indiana. I know Shanahan's going to Pennsylvania, but you might want to be able to drive to the facility for updates or whatever. Indiana might be more convenient. The dog that we are getting for our child pornography unit is in Indiana, it's in Indianapolis, so it's just three hours away. And that worked out really well, because we had to have a get-to-know-you meeting with the handler and the dog before we could approve the purchase, and it worked out really well. So we're going to have that dog at the beginning of November, and I'm kind of old, I don't think I mentioned that yet, did I? All right, whatever. The, this dog's going to allow us to, when we do the surges on a child pornography bus, that there's a SIM card loaded with child porn that's hidden in the ceiling or in the wall or in the carpet or in a safe. This dog will find it. It's amazing. Jared Vogel from Subway got nailed by one of these dogs, named Bear, and it's from the same handler that we're buying our dog. And we've named him CAG, C-A-C-A-G, it's a computer term, I guess, but it sounds cool. But anyway, look forward to working with you on this, and it's going to make a huge difference, because when they pull over a car, and they can use this dog to see if there's something there that needs to be looked at. Our illustrious Supreme Court says we can only hold somebody 20 minutes on a traffic stop otherwise. Even if he's got 20 kilos in there, at least 22 minutes, it's suppressed. So God love America. Sorry, segue. Sometimes common sense just doesn't play a role with the legal system. But if we do it right, we can still grab these guys. And, you know, my office has been very, very successful in seizing money from criminals, and doing my very best to claw it back into the farmland out here. That's where this money's coming from, and if you were to forfeit your money, and could be put to better use. So thanks again.
Thanks, Jim. And I think, Jim, really, somebody, people realize, I got this item I was building from the chief on what the estimated cost was, and we know Mr. Glasgow said he would donate more than just the dog. Costs associated with that, with what he just said tonight, is about $25,000, including the dog's expenses. Tremendous, tremendous donation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're almost there, right? A lot of you know that we were blessed with Rexo for 13 years. We knew what the, what a tremendous benefit that K-9 is in the community, is acting as a great deterrent towards drug usage. With drugs that are current in town, and to be able to get a K-9 again, I think it's a tremendous opportunity. Again, Jim, thank you very much. All right. Next on here, we've got to step out of my eyes here, will be Don Goldin, Don Goldin and Reagan Freitag, I know we're here running for county court. And I'd like to offer you guys the opportunity to speak before the council tonight, make your presentation. So one first, and then the other next.
Thank you. I'm Reagan Freitag, I'm from Wilmington, and I'm running for county board District 6 with Don Goldin. And just to piggyback on what Mr. Glasgow said, the drug dog for Shanahan was something instrumental that the mayor of Shanahan had come to me and asked about. I not only represent Wilmington, but Shanahan, Monocca, Shorewood, Rockdale, Elwood, and Braywood. It's a plot of villages and towns and cities compared to some of the other county board members that maybe just represent Bolingbrook or whatever. So to divide your time amongst all those and give your attention and your thought and, you know, dollars and muddies and grant, takes a lot of time, but I have that time. Shanahan, when they came to me, went immediately to Jim. And I know that there are funds, and these teacher funds, I know that as an attorney, working in court system and working with Jim's office, and then also being on the county board, that there were dollars there. So he didn't say no, and so we proceeded with that. I know Wilmington is, was something, working with the Wilmington Coalition for a Healthy Community, since its inception, we started having our meetings right here in this room, actually. And, you know, obviously Wilmington's my hometown, and I care, and sometimes I have to be careful about the amount of attention or muddies that I bring to Wilmington. And that's why I was glad I got, you know, and worked for Shanahan. But then when it came to Wilmington, I was a little worried about, do I go to Jim again? Do I be greedy? You know, my dad always says, "Take it back, obviously it's watered." But what's the worst you can say is no? I asked, and I received. So I'm very, very happy. But it wasn't just my effort, it was our chief, it was Marty, it was Wilmington Coalition. And that is pretty much what I'm here to say, is that once we all work together, we can actually get things done, we can accomplish things, whether it's across the aisle, Jim's a democrat, and I'm a Republican, whether it's city council, county board. And that's why I'm running, is because I can work with anybody and anyone, and I'd like to do it again, and I'd like your support. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and other city council, I'm Don Goldin from Shorewood. Glad to be here this evening, I'm glad to work with the state's attorney and Reagan on this project. I've been working with the city council over the years on CBPG grants and so forth to make some infrastructure improvements in Wilmington. I won't make a long speech other than to say that I've been very accessible during my time on board, and if I'm re-elected, I intend to be accessible to all those communities. Joe, I know you're running for the same spot. I salute your service here in Wilmington. And if there's anything I can do to help out Wilmington, I'd be glad to do so. Thank you very much.
Also tonight, we have Mr. Walter, Deputy Walter is also running.
Yeah, thank you. About a little over two months ago now, I became your guys' new state representative for the 75th district. In Will County, that takes in Braywood, Wilmington, Shanahan areas. It's been a great two months. I'm really a local government guy, though, just as yourselves. I spent the last six years on the Grundy County Board, the last two years as the chairman of the Board, leading county government. It's given me a lot of good insight into the state government, how things have been running. I know just as many as you, Mayor, I'm sure as you've been aware over the last several years, Springfield continues to put more pressure, more requirements on local government, on local school districts, really without any money to trail, ending up forcing us to either cut services somewhere or raise taxes. That's happened for too long, too many years. I've realized that at a local level. And that's one of the things I want to take down to Springfield with me, is really having a keen insight as to how local government runs, working with our townships, our villages. At county level, we were always collaborating with our villages and our townships. What works in Grundy County, what works in Will County, isn't necessarily going to work in Southern Illinois or Cook County. So I'm a big proponent that a one-size thing does not necessarily fit all. So I'm out there, I'm talking about the different things. But over in Grundy County, we had a great story to tell at a local level. We took it over, our predecessors had borrowed tens of millions of dollars in debt. We paid down debt early, reduced our interest rate, and last year, in the state of Illinois, we actually got a credit rating upgrade. That's pretty impressive in terms of your fiscal health. And Grundy County has done that. We got rid of pensions for part-time county board members and healthcare for part-time county board members. Our part-time employees were not receiving those benefits. It wasn't right for somebody who attended five meetings a month to receive those benefits either. Good, common sense, smart government, that's what I'm about. I want to represent Wilmington well. I've been trying to go from every end of the district over these last two months to meet our police chiefs, our mayors, our superintendents. I was just up at Yorkville, raced down here, there was something at the courthouse there. Whatever I can do to represent our community and what's going on, I want to. My office is open. We're in Morris, right off of Route 47, I took over John Anthony's old office. But we're here, whether it's a deal with an agency at the state, I've got a great legislative aide. If you're having an issue with the Department of Revenue, having an issue with DCFS, we are usually a really good conduit to help you get an answer quicker. So whatever I can do, please feel free to reach out. It's been an honor the last two months serving you guys. I want to go to Springfield though and do my job. The most frustrating thing to me is I was appointed after they put a stopgap together, which was six months for most funding for the state. They did fund education, they did fund roads for the whole fiscal year. But yesterday, the saddest thing to see, I went to Joliet, to the Center for Disabilities, and you see the truly most needy in our community. This mess in Springfield is going to end up affecting them, and that's what's unfortunate. I'm talking to the center directors, and they're saying, "David, it's great that you guys passed the six-month stopgap budget, but when you guys go back after the election after November, it's going to be too late for us. We're going to have to start laying people off, we're going to have to start kicking people out of here." And as a people, that is wrong, and we need to do our job so we ensure in the future this doesn't happen again. But thank you for your time, I'm going to end it there, feel free to reach out anytime.
Thanks, Officer Daniel Walter. And also to make everybody aware, early voting for November 8 elections begins at City Hall on October 24th, and runs through November 4th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. So thank you, guys, for coming, and the opportunity to hear your guys' presentation regards to my list. So number two, I'm kind of moving around here, kind of starting to mumble jumble. We had Coal City VFW here for a presentation tonight.
Yes, and you'll all be relieved, I'm not going to ask you for any more money. I was here about six months ago, and I was soliciting, Wilmington, we solicited all the local communities. And I don't know if you remember taking a look at the honor roll in its previous condition, and you're going to look at the honor roll, what it's turned into today. Most people can't recognize, they said, "That's not the same document." It is. This is what happens when you get professionals to do the work. This took over a year to raise the money, and they worked on this for six months before they finally...
Can you kind of, I like how you came about. What transpired, I know there are people here that weren't here.
Oh, that weren't here before? Okay. Last May, or May of 2015, Coal City police officer discovered this document in a handmade frame with no glass. It was behind a file cabinet on the second floor of the village hall. He realized that it was something that was important and shouldn't be thrown away. He gave it to the village board in Coal City. Right after he found this, a tornado hit down, so it stayed in the village manager's office till September. I know the officer personally, and he called me and he said, "You've got to come and see this document." I said, "Okay." So he took me over to the village hall. The village manager wasn't in, but he went in his office and got the thing anyway. He brought it out, and he said, "What do you think?" And I said, "Well, that looks like something that we ought to take care of, something we ought to preserve." So I went back to the village board, and they decided to give it to our VFW post. And we set about raising the money to have the thing professionally restored and framed. Those of you who did not see the document earlier, you wouldn't even know it's the same, the same thing. It's, there were 16 of the names on here that were, you couldn't read anymore. They were originally Donna and Seppia Inc., and they had faded, so it was very difficult to even see them. The restoration, the paper conservator that did this, a woman named Jack Lee Leary, hand did all 16 of these names, and it's almost impossible to tell, she duplicated the original hand, and it's almost impossible to tell which ones she did and which ones were done originally. The names were put on here probably four or five different times, as these men who were members of the United Mine Workers Local 1147, as they went into the service, their name was added to the son of them. So I'll take it around here and let, let some of the other council members here get a better look at it. See, all of these things, and these three down here, she redid. And you can't, you know, the hand is almost identical.
And these were all mine, mine workers.
These, remember, these guys all belonged to United Mine Workers Local 1147, which was headquartered in Coal City. But in those brochures that I handed out, these people were from Wilmington, South Wilmington, some of them were from Braywood, they were from all of the local communities. And what's really nice about this restoration project is, this is a cooperative effort. The state's attorney, when he was in here before, talked about cooperation between units of local government, and this was one of those cooperations. All of the communities around here donated to this, most of the veterans organizations threw some money in the pot. We raised a total of $2,233.78. So before somebody asks me about the 78 cents, I'm going to explain it. He went to the village of Carbon Hill, and they offered to put money in, and they did, and they also offered to put a can out at their beer tent. Well, that's where the 78 cents came from, because everybody would throw their money in the can, and when it got all done, you know, we counted it, and it come up and there was 78 cents. There was a lot more than 78 cents in there, but it come out and it moved to 78 cents, so that's how we got it. So anyway, this is it. We're pretty proud of what happened, and we're very proud of the fact that all of the communities worked together to accomplish this. We had the easy part, raising the money. I thought it was going to be the hard part, but it wasn't. And we also have, for the city of Wilmington, we have a one-third size copy of the document. You can hang this on the wall, if you like. You're welcome. And thank you.
Thank you. Who's going to ask me? How is this thing going to be hanging? Now we can have our own hanging there.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you. All right, a couple more things under the matters report. Trick or treat hours, that time we get already, 4:30 to 7:30 on October 31st, which is Sunday. All right. Next, I have a mayoral appointment, my mayoral appointment of a part-time police officer. Do you get that?
I sure do, sir. I move to approve the mayoral appointment of part-time Wilmington police officer, Anthony Ritz.
Motion by Alderman Percy, do we have a second?
One second.
Second by Alderman, do we have any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Six yes, two absent, motion passes.
All right, now we've got to make it official, Mr. Ritz, come on up here. Please, your right hand repeat after me. I state your name. All right, next up is citizens' comments, and I have Jennifer Bigwood here. Come on up, yes.
I'm not good at public speaking, everyone before me, so mine's on paper. All right. "We're here to ask that the city reverse the property surplus of the North Coast Skate Park or put it on hold. I am willing to spearhead fundraising to help with the cost of updating or replacing the outdated equipment. I have spoken to the Coalition, the Wilmington Wrestling Club, and they have both showed interest in helping. I also plan on contacting the Rotary Club and nearby skate shops to see if they will donate to or help fundraise for the skate park. The city can apply for a skate park grant through the Tony Hawk Foundation, which offers $1,000 to $25,000. The skate park is used daily by the kids in our community. My son and his friends utilize the skate park three to four days a week in the spring, summer, and fall. Removing anything that benefits kids and keeps them on the right path is not beneficial to our town. Our skaters are great kids who deserve to be recognized and supported by the town they call home. Skating is an sport offered to our children by our school district. The skate park is literally the only place they have to pursue their passion. Whatever reasons may have been 12 years ago to build our skate park, those reasons still stand to keep our skate park. I'd like to be invited to the next building and grounds meeting to discuss this further."
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think, you know, councils and committees have many discussions in relation to this, and especially when it deals with the subject area, it's always a difficult decision, and I think we can really look at the fact that the equipment's getting aged, the property needs to be replaced anyway. And I think that's one of the concerns that was presented, and there was also concerns from residents in that area as it relates to noise and stuff like that. Does that mean that a skate park would go away? No. I think what it does mean is maybe we have to look at it. You guys, you know, you've got a lot of energy I think that could be utilized as we go forward with the Buildings and Grounds Committee. We may not put it at the same location we did last time because of those concerns that we have with neighbors.
Right. So much of the houses.
But, you know, we got tremendous amount of property as it comes to like the South Island Park and stuff like that that we could possibly utilize for this very purpose. And it could also be a multi-use purpose for other reasons, for other opportunities as well. I think that's a very doable project. You kind of highlight some of the challenges we have, and that's because it relates to monetary issues. But I think we can work through that, I think we can work together to get that. To say that skate park, having a skate park in Wilmington will never happen is foolish. I think we very well could have a skate park. It may not be where it is right now. Maybe we'll get a little better with that time. Maybe we'll put it in a place that doesn't infringe on a neighbor or a resident, what they, what they feel is our comfort level, whether they're not. But I think if we could work together with that, create an area that could be more centralized and offer an opportunity for more kids to utilize it, I think there'll be a benefit. So I'm glad you come and stood up and basically said, "Hey, we're here to help." We don't get that very often, okay? We usually get it the other way. So to say, "Hey, we want to help do this," I think is tremendous, and I'm more happy to work with you guys to get us some type of skate park.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. All right, any other citizens' comments tonight?
I just want to remind everybody that 6 o'clock next Monday night at the Live Tour is the Coalition Anniversary Meeting, and we give out the founders of Wally Weaver Potluck Dinner, and Mr. Walter, you're more than welcome to attend.
Thank you.
I'll give the information.
Okay. And then October 16th is the...
Harlem ambassadors.
Harlem ambassadors thing.
4 o'clock at the high school.
4 o'clock at the high school.
And Mr. Van Dyne will be one of the players.
That's just you. You're going to be the goalie, right? You're going to be the goalie, right?
I got a par minute to Mr. Basketball.
So, I mean, yeah, we have tremendous amount of one, especially with that fact, I can't forget that that is at 4 o'clock, it's at the high school.
Right.
Tickets are for sale at Evans Line Garden, City Hall, and Coliseum.
The Park District.
The Park District as well. So, hey, spread the word out, throw it on Facebook. I think it's a great opportunity. You guys see, we have to raise money to get that vehicle, this dog in, the officer is going to be taking care of that dog. So once we get to that point, I think it just puts us that much farther ahead, so...
Good luck, Joe. Of course, I appreciate that, because that's where I have to show.
Any other citizens' comments tonight? All right, planning zoning commission. Their next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 20th at 5:00 p.m. Committee reports, Building Grounds Parks Health and Safety, Alderman Persick, Alderman Van Dyne.
Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Thursday, October 12th, 2016 at 6:00 p.m.
Busy man, Frank. Police arrest, Alderman Stuter.
Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, October 11th, 16 at 5:30.
Finance, Administration, and Land Acquisition Committee, again, Alderman Stuter.
Mayor, I move to approve the comp payable report in the amount of $328,419.42 presented by the county.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, real second. Second by Alderman Evans. Any discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Stuter.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Six yes, two absent. Notion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the second amendment to the lease agreement with Open Lands and the city of Wilmington for Ridge Street properties.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, we have a second. Second by Alderman Evans. Any discussion?
Do we, do we know how much we owe for that document? Do we have an idea?
There's ongoing discussions. I had a meeting with Open Lands last week. There's still discussions as far as we have. We've attributed the $200,000 to $25,000. There's the National Parks Grant that we got, that basically that doesn't get issued until closing. So that's what we're working on right now, is trying to determine the final amount, so we're going to now work towards that closing process. Basically, what we're doing tonight is just a $5,000 extension, like we did last night. This agreement was $5,000 to extend it to first to continue that. I hope to have the guys reasonable numbers by the October 18 meeting, which I'm hoping for. If not, the first meeting in November. We'll keep your prizes, those discussions go through.
And how long does the $5,000...
Till the end of the year, I believe.
End of the year?
Yeah. We look to have it settled before then.
So when, to get the grant, they have to come up with the total price?
Yeah, once, once there's, there's the closing cost and everything else, they'll be determined price, that amount from the grant might not meet that, that agreed-upon amount between us and the Open Lands. That's where our discussions will go from there, and then we'll make that determination. This is just $5,000, which is ongoing, allows to continue those discussions. Any further discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Stuter. Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
No.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
We have five yes, one negative, two absent. Notion passes.
Okay, the next one we were talking about, Jeff. What about a motion to a pushing memorandum of understanding of the local transportation? Very wonderful. People can still bank.
This is simply an agreement that parties agree to sit down and work out an agreement. How long the lines of what's included in here? I've looked at the agreement, there are a few things that I thought we needed to change about the city, and I'm enthused it had it in here. So that's basically what this is, is an agreement to agree to sit down and to agree to a final document. That's basically a little bit to do there. But...
An agreed-upon amount or a balance of the gathering as far as billables are...
Right, the amounts are there, this is what it's supposed to be, but the, this in and of itself is not binding, according to the charter. It's just an agreement that parties agree to sit down and to come up with an agreement that may include other things in here, but this is just the big outline we're looking at. And this is something that has to come back, back to the county council.
So are we approving this thing as a, as a stand for a kind of motion? We're looking for a motion to...
But how does that relate to our project? It's totally missing her, but how I, it's a case of... Okay, this, to me, was told, this was binding to make that proof, that would allow that to issue the document. That's how ultimately what is the goal, but this is, you know, in and of itself, since it's not a binding document. Or is it a binding document? That's when the parties sit down and iron out, in fact, wording of how it's going to operate. This is what was presented to me, and I reviewed it, and it's simply a statement as to, basically we have an understanding of what your agreement is going to be, but ask to reduce it into a more binding document. Does this by any way force us to allow for a way to go on the project? No. You have to have an agreement first. That's my understanding of this thing. I'm ahead of myself, but that's what I thought we approved, that binding agreement. I haven't seen the, I haven't seen the binding agreement. No, this is just a memorandum of understanding. I can be straight to say, from the beginning to... Well, what's the purpose of the MOU? Let me, let's find out what this does, what kind of, what's this toward our next step? Okay? Because I'm a little confused. The purpose of the memorandum of understanding is to see if there's, there can be an agreement between the parties, and if it appears that there can't be an agreement, then this will show that, and that would allow the parties to sit down and, you know, negotiate as to the language of the agreement. Whereas if you're far apart on anything, it doesn't make any sense to sit down and to try to work things out. But this is a general outline of the agreement. So with a little bit of discussion down about prior to meeting here and finance, one of the things that were brought forward by Alderman Van Dyne was having some protections in there for escalations and pricing over the next two years for material and things like that, so that the actual number may not be binding, if we could protect ourselves in any way of material, but it costs a lot more. Right, that's why I made some changes to this, in order to be able to incorporate that into a final document. This memorandum of understanding provided that, once we entered into the agreement, the city had to issue a, issue a permit. And I changed that to provide that the city only has to issue a permit if it's already been specifically identified in the proposed intergovernmental agreement, that you know what the permit's supposed to be. And they indicated here they want the city to issue design approvals and permits for the project. My position was that if we don't know exactly what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, that we should not just part-chunch, issue an approval and permit, we want to make sure that I have the language in here to provide that the city would issue design approvals and permits that are specifically identified in the proposed intergovernmental agreement, and that it's needed for the HSR improvements as currently proposed. So basically, the way it was worded left out the ability of the city to say, "Wait a minute, you know, we don't really like what you're proposing to do." But in this sense, we give an idea as to what it is ahead of time. So that's some of the changes that I made to this, to help protect the city. So basically, what this does is allows us to make the next step for the intergovernmental agreement, to not, basically allows, this does not, because that's my biggest concern, but I don't want these overloads on our, on our roads, and I see you've made that necessary change, to not have these go on our roadways until we have an actual IGA is in place. Is that what you're saying? That's my understanding, because this is not binding right now. Correct. That's the language that was in there before. I also added a line in here that there was concern about the roads being damaged and the urgency of repair. Correct. So it wasn't in this, and so memorandum of understanding is only supposed to cover those things that were going to be created subsequently. So I had that changed to give the city some leverage if that were to take place, so we can put some language in the memorandum of the actual intergovernmental agreement whereby the city would have some say about if a road needs some urgency repairs, I put language in there that the city retains the right to close a road if public, if it's necessary for public safety, so... Has that got senior commitment to you? Uh, I don't know. I've forwarded this on to the city administrator.
Yeah, this was forwarded to Mr. Blackmore. Mr. Blackmore asking this, which is directed at Secretary. I thought we had comments back. I felt like I was being aware of these changes last time I went to meeting.
I'm not aware if they made any changes to it.
I mean, I like what you, what you're doing, where you're still adding protection for the city, which is instrumental in this whole thing. But what you're saying is, even if with the MOU in place, there's, there's no allowance for them to utilize our roads until the IGA is...
Correct. And we wanted to see their construction, they had to go on their plan, right? So we don't want it... Right, that, right. Which is the way we're approved and what we're agreeing, right? Which is entitled the IGA.
So what, is proper motion to table this, or to strike it right now and bring it back later, or what do you want to do?
I would just table it till the next meeting, like I requested, so...
All right, I'd like to make a motion to table, a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Homeland Department of Transportation and the city of Wilmington for improvements. I'd like to watch.
Motion by Alderman Stuter to table. Second by Alderman, oh, where you go. Go call both, please.
Alderman Stuter.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Six yes, two absent. Notion passes.
Okay, the next... Four and five is going to table. I'm making the resolution, those are the tables already made up, so... Four and five, four and six.
Move this on six. We had some discussion at Finance about six, and six is a motion to approve the ordinance 16-10-04-01, and that was an ordinance directing the sale of the former city of Wilmington police station at 120 North Main Street, bearing parcel numbers joined here. Some of the questions were, that were brought up in discussion at Finance, John, had to do with the layout of the property, and there's a bit of confusion in the lot parcels and the lot lines running through the non-included area, and what, if a, if some amendments to these lots would have to be made, or how we were going to deal with this situation.
The platavism that's in the package shows what's marked as parcel one, parcel two, and parcel three. Parcel three is where the police station is now.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to table, a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Alderman's Department of Transportation and the City of Wilmington for improvement, if that works.
Motion by Alderman Stewart to table. Just I make a motion, taken by Alderman Hall, Larry Hall. I'll call both of them.
Alderman Stewart?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman of Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Six yes, two w's, if motion passes?
Four and five is going to table, on the IGA and the resolution, those are the tables already made up, so. Four and five, four and five is six.
Move this on to six. We had some discussion at finance about six, and six is a motion to approve the ordinance sixteen dash ten dash zero four dash zero one, and that was an ordinance directing the sale of the former City of Wilmington Police Station at one twenty North Main Street bearing parcel numbers joined here. Some of the questions were, that were brought up in discussion at finance, John, had to do with the layout of the property, and there's a bit of confusion in the lot parcels and the lot lines running through the non-included area, and what, if a, if some amendments to these lots would have to be made, or how we were going to deal with this situation.
The plan of easement that's in the package shows what's marked as parcel one, parcel two, and parcel three.
Yes.
Parcel three is where the police station is now. The item that is shown as not included is the cell tower. And then there's a ten-foot east improvement to the west that's being proposed for access to the cell tower. And south of that line, parcel three, parcel two, and parcel one, is partly a parking lot, and then there's a small alleyway, and then the municipal building, the old municipal building.
Actually, some of that, that sixty-six feet does incorporate that ground and parking, not all of it, the whole stuff. Because buildings only forty-four feet wide. I think what we need to do before we go, I mean, continue on, it sounds like, because there's a sixty-six foot lot, then there's a sixty-six foot lot, which is City Hall, which it doesn't show on the map, we looked at the pin layout, then there's the alleyway. So I think it's best, and what we should do is take what we have here, as you guys see this tonight, little bit of ground, buildings and grounds, and we'll do an overlay, okay? We'll use the Google Maps overlay, and we'll lay that down as it sits right on that with these lines in a different color, so you guys can actually get a better physical representation of what this incorporates.
Okay.
And what it doesn't incorporate.
And one other question I wanted to ask again. Are we amending these lots to take that non-included area out, or is that already done? Do we have to change these pins? Do we have to take this to the county building and have these lots redrawn and approved? Do we need to make the non-included area a separate lot in itself? What do we do with that?
Ideally, it probably should be a separate lot. It's going to be under the ownership.
I thought that was under Westcom. Wasn't Westcom doing that necessary steps to create that separate pin?
We're waiting on Westcom to find a business for that non-included area.
So that pin hasn't come back yet on Westcom?
No.
So we can't really put a, we can't make a salable document of this until that's corrected.
Well, I think we can with the actual things, we just can't, we just don't have the actual pin numbers that we need on the backend. Unless I'm wrong, yeah, I would say. Will make it sell without the pin numbers there, for the...
Could the buyer try to make claim to that property if it's part of that pin?
Not if, the legal description in the ordinance excludes the non-included area. So, the city would be authorizing the sale of city-owned property excluding that area, so they could not make a claim to that because the city council did not authorize it to be sold. But it's something that typically you have to convey property as part of the lot, the entire lot. So if you break it off, a lot of times there's a requirement that you do need an accurate survey.
That's what I was thinking, we better have a professional survey involved in this so we can prove what it is, what it excluded.
We do have a survey done, we have the survey done, we have the price up, correct?
Correct. This is done by, this plan of easement, basically you're looking at a reverse image of what we have in here, to sell. This is a plan of easement for the ten-foot, for the non-included area. So, the plan of easement for what the city would be proposing to sell, and the new ordinance would be exactly what you see there as parcel three and southern porch, and parcel two and parcel one, so.
Let's do an overlay.
Well, if memory serves me, I thought we were going to get, I thought we were going to get an appraisal done on these two extra properties, because the appraisal only was of the police station itself.
When you offer a parcel, when you offer a parcel for sale pursuant to the ordinance that we, that I had prepared, you do not need an appraisal. You need an appraisal if you offer it under a different section of the statute, and then you have to accept nothing lower than eighty percent. But in this particular statute, if you would simply offer it for sale, you would not need an appraisal. But we have an appraisal for the case of parties, so.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we send ordinance number sixteen dash ten dash zero four dash zero one back to Building and Grounds Committee for the order.
How about, before you second that, just make a motion to direct the sale of the former police station back to Building and Grounds, the ordinance number will change.
Okay, I got you. All right, let me, let me resend my, pass motion and make another motion that we send the approval or the work on the sale of the Wilmington Police Station back to Building and Grounds Committee for...
All right, second.
Any further discussion, Mr. Hall, later on? Any further discussion? Mayor, you can take that over. I'm right on my way now.
All right. Say no further discussion, I don't think we'll come up with it.
Alderman Stewart?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Six yes, two w's, if motion passes?
All right.
I got a lot to do.
That's the end. The next meeting is Tuesday, October eighteenth, until sixteen at sixteen.
Ordinance to License Committee, Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman Evans. We have a second meeting for the white bar ordinance. This is going to be Tuesday, two thousand sixteen, twenty-four.
First, now collecting bargaining, Alderman Hall, Alderman Persick. Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor, and we're not going to do executive session.
There will be no executive session. Nope. And the city administrator, so scratch consulting service for Mr. Evans. Attorney's report, Mr. Irvin. Thank you. Since the last meeting, I've been involved in the Second Amendment Police Agreement, open lands in the city, reviewed the memorandum of understanding, and made some suggested changes to that, and also compared the ordinance for the sale of Wilmington Police Station. All I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Please.
Since Mr. Graff is not here, I was wondering, John, if you could answer a question for me concerning one twenty North Cankey Street. I believe that the building was caught fire. It's a building on Cankey Street that has three apartment buildings attached to it. There was some discussion about an ordinance and whether we can rebuild the property or whether we can't. Can you expand on that? I did see a letter that was written by you that says that we could not, the owner of that property could not rebuild because of the ordinance. Is that, do you recall any of that? Or could you explain, because I'm getting this secondhand, and I don't think any of the other councilmen know exactly what's going on?
I think a lot of that had to do with some information that wasn't totally correct. It was presented by the Building Department, the attorney. What was missed out is there's actually a provision as far as replacement cost, rebuildable cost, it's going to exceed a certain amount before that can be declared a, not, has to be done, so to speak. I think it's seventy-five percent of cost, which they, to repair the structure, exceeded seventy-five percent of the cost to the entire structure, then the rest of the structure would have to come down. The building department didn't have that information in front of them, or beforehand, and that wasn't conveyed to the attorney. So that's where the letter came from. Basically, it was one step ahead, they needed to wait until they got what the cost orders and repairs they hadn't gotten yet, because there were still insurance issues and stuff that we waived upon by the current owner. So, since that timeframe has come about, I believe they do got, have gotten a permit for demo for something, of course, they got to agree to open up walls and stuff like that. But talking to Chuck Kestlin, who's also within the Building Department, you know, kind of primary, last time he informed me is that the cost will not exceed seventy-five percent of the value cost, even if the price that that place was purchased for is not even going to exceed that, so they're allowed to rebuild repairs that it's, that's what it's supposed to be.
Okay. So, so we're reverting back, we had, we had an opinion by the city ordinance officer, and we had an opinion by the, by the city attorney, that's no longer void, and the building department...
No longer valid?
No, no, no longer valid, and the building department went and issued a permit after the fact, and now something has changed?
No, no, what happened was initially, when the letters went out, okay, when the letters went out, there was basically, a permit was submitted to, to do demo walls, okay, to allow for them to determine what the damage was, what the damage, extent of the damage was. Initially, that permit was not agreed upon, and calls were made to myself, calls were made to Alderman Larry Hall. We sat down and made those discussions to figure out what's going on. I know Alderman Larry Hall had meetings with the owner. At that time, we talked with Mr. Graff and had the same consultations. We've got Mr. Kestlin, who's kind of, I guess, would say the lead inspector and everything, you know, goes about, he gets his input on everything. And as it relates to, we come to find out that there was a provision, that it means it exceeds seventy-five percent of the cost, or it should be an automatic dent, okay, where the only thing you can do is demo your building and rebuild it, all right? So, once those were conveyed to us, which was after the letters, which went out, and after the determination for somebody wanting to come in and do some partial demo work, all of it and education process at the same time. And then we realized that this is what the steps had to be done. So, in essence, the letters to demo and everything else were kind of pulled back, once we realized that what the rules were is relates to this, this project, so to speak, or what's going on right now. And that's why they're moving forward with whatever they're doing. I know where they're at in the process now, I know Alderman Larry Hall, far along in the process, my process was when I heard this week, we worked out, to find out what was, what was the sticking point, what was the, where were we at, why was this not moving forward, what were the issues legally and through building codes, what we got to do at this point? You know, it's sort of effort on everybody's part to find out what we need to do, and we got that. So the lady that owns the property was able to move forward with what she's got to do as far as getting the thing demoed, working with their insurance company to give, review whatever caution's got in relation to the fire, and get back up and operational towards she can run it out of.
Is there, is there something in there to where there has to be a certain amount of property for this building to be rebuilt?
There was talk of that.
Are we breaking any ordinances?
No.
We are not?
What, what ends up happening, and it's not in common with a lot of the older portions of town, which you got is a legal and non-conforming lot, okay? Let's say a house in Brookside or a house in Northcrest, okay? They have five-foot side lot lines, okay? There's, there's a house, and there's five feet, and there's a property lot. Well, our new ordinance says you have to have ten feet, okay? So it's a legal and non-conforming structure. So let's say, unfortunately, somebody loses their home in any of that area, and they have to rebuild. Well, if you wanted, told them they have to rebuild on the current code, they could because it doesn't meet our current requirements. So it becomes a legal and non-conforming lot, and you allow them to build on that same footprint, even though there's only that five-foot lot line.
Who allows it?
The city does. You have to, basically...
Who, who from the city?
Mayor.
Yourself, or Building Committee?
I don't know how it's...
The Building Department?
Basically...
The Alderman?
I don't know. I don't know, there's just something that's always been, from my experience, that's how it's always been dealt with, is legal and non-conforming lot, building department's able to proceed with that legal and non-conforming because you're on the same investigation footprint.
Who, who makes that decision, Mr. Irvin?
In regards to making a modification, or repair?
No, the legal and conforming law issue.
Oh.
What we just talked about.
I mean, if they're making a variance, then they're... Well, you can just look at any lot, and see if that, a house or the suburb, and see if it meets the requirements of city ordinance.
But I guess the point is, if it doesn't anymore, who's, who's makes that legal binding decision to allow them to rebuild on a non-conforming lot now that it doesn't, no longer meets city ordinance?
Who, who makes the ultimate decision? Is it the mayor of Wilmington? Is it the city attorney? Is it Alderman Van Dyne? I'd like to know that answer.
You have, first of all, you need to know what the facts are, so you have someone in the real to make, determine what the facts are. And then you have to take a look at the ordinance, and then it's more or less a process where perhaps legal and building department looks at it to see what the answer is. I'll look up legal and non-conforming law, I'll give you the answer. About that, I'll...
So legal facts would be coming from the...
They say if the foundation is going to leak, you're...
It's always a law.
Or a parcel, or something like that. Yeah. Because that's like they told me, if my garage burnt down, I could book one on the same footprint as that. That's in the...
I'm pretty sure it's in the code book, and I'll see if I can find it for you.
He had good to know.
Look it up, is under one, probably one section. Well, that's why I'm asking here. I was looking at it in terms of whether I could build or not, but it is in the city ordinance in regards to definition of legal non-conforming use of structure.
I'm going to take that away, I can't say what the situation is.
Well, as I said, it's already in the ordinance.
Although, that's what I don't know, the situation, I don't know of it, so.
I think it's going with who has the responsibility.
Well, I think it's not a say.
Basically, the responsibilities that passed on, if you look at a legal non-conforming lot, the ordinance has been passed. The ordinance was passed by council, council would give approval and authority, whoever is in that position, the building department, acts upon that, okay? If the ordinance is in place, just like with the building inspector, code enforcement officer, anything else, anything they do that has to do with anything in relation to the ordinance, they are bound to buy it, much as they may not agree with that ordinance, okay? They are bound by that because they're still the authorities, who said this is what we want in place.
Well, the documents that I read, it was, it was suggested by our city ordinance officer, and also our city attorney, that this building could not be rebuilt.
And those were prior to all the facts were found.
Okay. How come, how come I don't know about this? How come no one else knows about this?
It's just day-to-day operation stuff.
Oh.
The daily operations stuff, okay? I mean, they got, they can give you stacks of paperwork, the daily operations.
I'm just afraid that our building department is not taking the advice of people that we hired, and just go ahead and make their own decisions.
And basically, that's what you're saying, what you're basically saying is you have concerns in the building department, and I, I understand those concerns, trust me, okay? But to try to kind of beat around the bush to get to it, you know, is that the right way to do it? No, to say, hey, we have concerns. I have concerns myself, the concerns are being addressed, but I think that needs to be done up at an administration level, okay? Instead of pulling somebody out and carpeting a public building, or in a public building, okay? That's, I mean, that's the right way to do it. I mean, in a roundabout way, we're seeing one people out, okay? And we know it shouldn't be, because we have staff that needs to handle it.
Staff needs to be accountable, Mr. Mayor, in front of the public, and we need to be transparent.
Absolutely.
And no one knows about this issue but, but one Alderman and one Mayor. I don't think anybody else has been addressed with this.
Because it's, it's still an internal issue, you're not wanting to make a public issue out of it. Let, let it be handled internally first.
So after, after the permit was already issued, and the job is underway, and the contractor comes in and starts working, I think it's too late.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, there's a permit issued, correct?
Correct.
Now, if I didn't, if I didn't go in and look for some information, I wouldn't even know if this contractor was coming in and redoing any, any work whatsoever.
Do you want to look at all the permits, and hold every?
No, I want to make sure that we're not doing anything on the, on the side, that, that we're not breaking any of our own ordinances.
And I totally agree with you, Alderman, I totally agree, and that's why when the person that was, the subject person was, felt that they weren't being handled properly, okay, they did what any citizen would do, is they reached out to their local Alderman, they reached out to me, okay, or actually, the Alderman reached out to me for some assistance, and we stepped in to, to work towards that goal, to where this person, whatever issue there would happen, trying to find out what the issues were, okay? Get them resolved, so she can move forward with what she's trying to get done. That's always trying to do, okay? Did I know you was looking at it? No, no I didn't. Did you, could you come to me yesterday, last week, the week before? Did you come to Alderman Hall? It's been like three or four weeks since this happened. You had every opportunity to do that, too.
I didn't know about it three, four weeks ago.
You found out about it today?
Hmm, not, probably a few days ago.
All right. Let me take the session, I can take a motion to adjourn.
I'm ready.
Second?
Second.
Mayor?
I am.
Alderman Persick, will you second on that one?
Yes.
Thank you.